This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Good evening, everyone. I respectfully call to order the November 20th Eau Claire Area School District School Board meeting. I want to thank those in attendance here and those that are listening online. I also thank you to our staff and board members for their dedication in being here as well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law?
Yes, we are.
Important for transparency for our taxpayers. And also roll call for verification of a quorum, please.
Commissioner Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Luganville.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Commissioner Bika is absent.
Thank you, Patty. We usually have at this time public forum where we give people four minutes of time to connect with their school board, but we didn't have anybody sign up this evening. So that's going to take us directly to our superintendent's report, Dr. Mary Ann Hardbeck.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review a series of events coming up for the Board of Education. On December 4th at 8:45 a.m. in the Administration Building, there will be a Policy and Governance Committee meeting. That will be followed at 7:00 p.m. by a school board meeting. On December 5th, there will be a Parent Advisory Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. at the Administration Building. And that will be followed on December 6th by Budget Development Committee meeting, which will take place at 11:30 a.m. here in the Administration Building. On December 12th at 4:00 p.m., the LEAP Committee will meet. And on December 21st, the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee will meet at 4:30. And those meetings will also be held in the Administration Building. And then on that Friday, December 22nd or 23rd, move break for our winter break.
The 12th we have the election.
Yes, and on hers. Okay. Thank you. In the meantime, we wish all of you a very peaceful and happy Thanksgiving. So tonight, we have a couple of individual recognitions, and we also have a recognition for the school district. And I'm going to start, I think, with the recognition for the school district because we were recently honored by the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association with two Spectrum Awards for our work in school communication. Spectrum Awards recognize high-quality public relations efforts produced by or on behalf of the Wisconsin school districts. And this year, this statewide competition honored 40 of the 422 school districts in the state. The Eau Claire Area School District received an Award of Excellence for its referendum campaign. This is the highest ranking in the competition. The materials submitted included the website design, referendum fact sheet, building-by-building project dashboard, a frequently asked questions document, a tax calculator, a flyer for information sessions, a calendar of community presentations, and a video showing our needs. And that was, I have to say, a very collaborative project. We had many, many people involved with Communications Committee, various people on the executive team and in their offices, and certainly my assistant Patty Iverson did a mighty load of work with that work. So we're very grateful for that recognition. We also received an Award of Merit for the Parents/Student Handbook, which is an annual publication distributed to all families in the district. And it comes in our back-to-school mailing. This document can be kept for parents and by parents for easy reference during the school year, and it provides the most up-to-date information in one spot about the schools and eliminates the need for each building to send this important information to parents. And it fulfills the mandatory requirements for annual notices. So again, congratulations to our school districts. I would also like to recognize Lakeshore parent Holly Jacobson. Is Holly with us tonight? Holly, stand up! Holly has been selected to serve on State Superintendent Tony Evers' Parent Advisory Council for 2017-18. And Holly is one of 19 members serving on this parent advisory committee. Their mission is to foster communication and engagement of families and community members in helping schools to close student achievement gaps in Wisconsin. They share information on positive programs and resources to increase student achievement, and they provide a parent voice to DPI. Students with families engaged in their education are more likely to do better in school, graduate from high school, and be college and career-ready. And the Parent Advisory Council will play an important role in helping the Department of Public Instruction get this critical message out to all families, educators, and policymakers in Wisconsin. So Holly, we're grateful that you're serving on that committee, and we feel that it gives us a voice on that very important committee and is a link to our own parent advisory council. So thank you. So the Wisconsin Association of School Boards invites member school boards to submit the names of local businesses that have made important contributions to their school districts and to their communities. Our school board nominated five businesses who have partnered with the district in a significant way. WASBE helps to promote those business partnerships throughout the state and also to recognize the exemplary work of those partnerships. So tonight, we have five of those partnerships to recognize, and we're going to begin with Marshfield Clinic. And Scott Pollins, I think you're here too. Is he here? Where is he? Please come up. So as you're coming up, Chris is telling me whether or not you're a graduate of ECU. So Marshfield Clinic is a close partner with the Eau Claire Area School District. For the past four years, Marshfield Clinic has worked alongside district staff to promote health and wellness of its employees. As part of their effort to increase access to health care, Marshfield Clinic worked with our district along with two other organizations to establish a near-site clinic for our staff members. Marshfield also partners with students and teachers to display student artwork and recognizes student artists with three art recognition ceremonies each year. As a responsive health care provider, Marshfield Clinic has established a format to enable our school district employees to provide feedback and guidance to ensure that the health care for our employees receives and meets the unique and ever-changing needs of our staff. So thank you, Scott. We'd also like to recognize the Mayo Clinic Health System. So we're also going to recognize the Mayo Clinic Health System partners, and we have Dr. Jose Ortiz, Chief of Staff, and Zan Deegan, Vice Chair of Administration from the Mayo Clinic Healthcare System. Their partnership with us provides students with various skills and opportunities. The Medical Experience Program, MEDX, provides medical experiences to high school students who are considering careers as physicians. During the program, students job shadow physicians in a variety of specialties in a clinic setting. This experience provides our students with an opportunity to learn about aspects of medical practice they would not otherwise be exposed to, and has helped to foster an aspiration to medical practice in many of our students. Another impactful Mayo Clinic Health System program is Project Search. Through Project Search, students with barriers to future employment are given support and structure to learn skills needed to be successful upon graduation from our district. This program has helped to fill a community education and economic need and has had a positive impact on our students. So thank you. And one of our own student school board members is right now involved in that internship program with MEDX. Yeah, so. We'd also like to recognize Plank Enterprises Incorporated, and Gary Fenner is here. Plank Enterprises, a local manufacturer of health schools in the Eau Claire Area School District by providing advocacy, expertise, and opportunities for students. Gary Fenner, Plank's Corporate Vice President, sits on our district's Manufacturing Advisory, which helps inform our decisions about technical education. He has been a strong advocate for the continual development of our area's technical education, including programs, funding, and access to modern equipment. Plank Enterprises has also begun hosting youth apprenticeship students. Through this program, Plank has committed to collaborating with technical education teachers and providing students with engaging opportunities to develop capacities needed for successful careers in manufacturing. And next, we have Royal Credit Union. We have a number of people, so if you'll come up. We have Brandon Richards, who's president and CEO, Jan Johnson, Executive Vice President, Organizational Agility, Vicky Hain, Vice President, Community Engagement, and Kathy Bazy, Financial Education Supervisor from Royal Credit Union.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So.
This isn't this. Keep going.
Oh, okay.
This is ECU.
All right. So Royal Credit Union provides Eau Claire students in elementary, middle, and high school with career exploration opportunities. Every school year, RCU hires elementary and middle school students to work at RCU's school site branches in several schools in our districts. Students gain employability skills by participating in an application and interview process. Students also complete a training program to learn the computer system, confidentiality, member service, and marketing. The school site is open once a week for students and faculty to deposit into the Royal Credit Union account. And for every 500 deposits made, the school receives $250 as a fundraiser. In both Eau Claire North High School and Eau Claire Memorial High School, students have an opportunity to complete a youth apprenticeship at one of RCU's high school sites. RCU youth apprentices learn to offer most of the services as in any other RCU branch. And I think that one of the things that RCU has done is to help us promote financial literacy, and for that, we are very grateful.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Very much, Patty.
Chris Phillips, Excel Energy. Excel Energy is one of our district's most longstanding partners. For more than 15 years, Excel Energy has hosted youth apprenticeship students. These students are given the opportunity to work with cutting-edge drafting and design systems and to not only gain skills, but to apply those skills to the development and maintenance of our regional infrastructure. Mentoring staff at Excel Energy take great pride in the students who learn from this experience, some of whom who have gone on to successful careers working at Excel Energy. Because of this partnership, over 30 of the Eau Claire Area School District students have completed an engineering apprenticeship in drafting and design. Thank you very much. Our school district has as its goal developing partnerships with the community, and certainly, these five partnerships represent the best of what we've been able to accomplish together.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. That was wonderful. That takes me on to our president's report. I haven't had a lengthy report for a while, so I wanted to pull you all up to speed a little bit. So sit back for the ride a little bit. I think I have 10 things on here, sorry. Recently, I wanted to start with a couple thank yous. I noted last week another United Way silent auction down here at 500 Main. You kind of always know that when you're walking in and things are in the cupboards and people are screwing around to do this. I know Patty has been instrumental in facilitating this activity for many years, and it appeared to me that there was, again, many donations and a great success in raising funds for the United Way. So I thank Patty and all those that helped make this activity successful, demonstrating a great sustaining connection to our community, which we have had for a very long time. Patty, how far back does it go? Long time.
Thirty-three years.
Yeah, and I was two forty years ago, and so there you go. Second, the board participated in many Veterans Day activities on November 10th and 11th. I especially thank North Star for hosting the citywide ceremony put on by the Patriotic Council on Saturday, November 11th. Many, many staff, students emceed, played in the brass quintet, handed out programs, cookies, and coffee. It was very well attended. Every time I have time to embed into our district's classrooms and into our buildings and into our programs, I'm extremely thankful for our staff and our students. I do think we also completed our first Eau Claire Area School District Information Recruiting Table at our recent MONG New Year Community Celebration at the Sports Center. I actually had the opportunity to spend several, on Saturday, several hours there, and I had the opportunity to talk to two of our MONG alumni, one working in Minneapolis and another just finished a paid internship in Augusta. Both had interest in coming back to Eau Claire to start or expand their education experiences and employment. So as we work out how to grow our own employees, it was a powerful experience for me to go through these conversations with former students. And I didn't expect that to happen, actually, but it did. Also, we again had staff and board members give up weekend time to make these amazing connections to our community. I thank you all for that commitment. My heart swelled as I watched many, many students come over and interact with their educators and school staff. You could tell there was just amazing relationships there. They were also happy that we were there, and I had a really fun day. I know there were several of us there over the two days. I want to thank the district, our communication team, and Mary Ann for getting the thank yous out during American Education Week. That was kind of a scramble at the end because, you know, those things come up so fast. So you did a yeoman's job, so thank you for that. Also, I noticed and I sent to all board members, on December 12th, 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. at Wildridge Golf Course is the Learn About the Local Business Climate Survey. It's the three-year aggregate results. It was formerly called the Skills Gap Survey. I'm on the road that day for work. I just want you to be aware that it's there if anybody could attend. That's good information. Scott Hodak will share aggregate three-year results data collected from the Local Business Climate Survey, formerly the Skills Gap Survey. Data will be revealed on difficult-to-fill positions, concerns over how to fill upcoming retirements, what degrees are highly sought after, and additional job data as reported by local employers in the Chippewa Valley. So sent that to Patty, too, which you probably have it. So if you want to RSVP, you have to do that by December 6th. Then I attended the Jonah Gathering last Wednesday that was presenting on a statewide agenda for cutting childhood poverty in half in Wisconsin in 10 years. I didn't quite know what that meeting would be like going, but it was interesting because it is really a statewide focus. And presently, it is, Jonah is pulling together several different coalitions. And they, the kickoff is December 14th. They've asked, maybe to kick it off in one of our school buildings or whatever. We're in the process of still putting that together. But I wanted you to be aware of that more information will be coming out about that. I think the premise is to really concentrate on the fact that children have the highest poverty in our state now and that they want to pose it as one target for conversation in the state of Wisconsin because truly, the poverty piece with children, if we can cut it in half in 10 years, will affect many of the other things we do in public schools. There's a great connection there. So Mary Ann and Jim and I have to kind of still talk about whether we can do it in the district, otherwise, there's other places within the community. Please pass the word to anyone thinking about running for school board. We have an information form on December 12th at 6:30. I think it's in this room. We have four board members up for election or reelection. They are Joe Luganville, Lori Bika, Eric Torres, and Catherine Dux has decided not to run for a fourth term. So we are, we're going to keep celebrating that, though, and your contribution to the board, Catherine. So pass the word. Correspondence to the board. The board received a thank you from Memorial German Department and students, and I want to share that with you, so I'll pass it around. I'll pass it around once I get done with my report. They sent a thank you. I don't know, did anybody have a chance to go to the German band Ein Schatz? Six? Was it?
It was really fun.
Well, they sent a neat thank you. Plus, I sent out to the board today a thank you from the German teacher from Hudson as well because they came from all over and they just really loved it. So, yeah, I was on the road for work that day. Anybody that doesn't know what the German band Ein Schatz? My mom was a German teacher. I just flunked. But it's a unique mix of hip-hop and classical music. They're on a U.S. tour this fall. The band combines percussion, violin, rap vocals, piano, and guitar for an energizing, unique concert experience. It was neat that they got them to come here.
It was very. It was very interactive because the band members were up in front speaking German, and all of the students got to clap and jump up and down and do everything in German, and they learned a whole song in that one hour. And it was just great. I think they had a wonderful time.
Yeah, it seemed like, and the thank you is signed by everybody, so I'll send that around. I have been made aware also that we now have our own copy of Raising of America. We talked about that, I think, the board, we talked about opportunities that we were showing it out in the community over the past year or so, but we have our own copy now, even with our students. It's an amazing documentary that, about early childhood development that goes beyond parenting to explore how social conditions, public policy, and inequities impact our youngest children. Joe and I worked on a committee with Jonah and the City-City County Health Department and Chippewa Valley Community Television initially to show this around to the community. And many did view the documentary. The white paper came out of the first round across the country of showing this video. It's quite informative. I'll send that out to board members. You can take a look at it. It's really well done. It would be impactful if every board member would watch, and now that we have our own copy, you'd be able to do that on your own time. Or we could set up a time and watch it together as a board. So I'll start bugging you about that now, too. Okay? And lastly, I'm kind of wondering how many board members are going to go to the WASBE Convention on the 17th, 18th, and 19th? Can I see a show of hands? Okay, so it'd be Catherine, I, and Joe, I guess. Okay? All right.
Does anyone want to go to the pre-session?
I do.
I know you mentioned that you might.
Okay.
I'm going to all of it, but you don't have to register. You pay for it because they're free.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Because Joe's, yeah. Joe's on the Resolution Committee, so we get a little price break there. Thanks, Joe. Okay, and that concludes my president's report. Student Representative Reports. Who's going first tonight? Ryan? Good evening, you two.
Good evening. A couple of students, Lauren and a couple other students from the Subcommittee for the Academic Rank. We had a meeting tonight with Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Oldenburg regarding a survey that we're going to put out to all students about class rank and GPA and possible listening sessions we're going to have with students. Two of the students and I also had a good meeting with a few staff members to help make this year's course catalog more user-friendly. We went almost section by section, discussed placement of descriptions and how those changes can get more students to use it as a useful tool for their academic career. For the school year calendars that will be presented tonight, I would like to support option two. I know it's not being voted on yet, but I want it to be known that from a student's perspective, one four-day weekend is more appealing than two different three-day weekends. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan and Lauren.
All right, so as Ryan mentioned, we've had a couple meetings between students and administrative staff regarding the course catalog and further discussions regarding class rank. So we look forward to those deeper discussions with students regarding class rank and the survey we're sending out early in December. And then I would just like to make a comment regarding all of the threats that have gone around, starting with the threat at Memorial a couple weeks ago. And I would just like to commend the Memorial staff for the way they handled it. From a student's perspective, everything went smoothly. I don't think at any point students felt that they were in danger with respect to the way the staff handled the situation. And then the following days, staff made a point of making themselves available for students for discussion. They were very open in communicating with students. So I would just like to commend the Memorial staff for the way they handled that situation. So that concludes my report.
Lauren, I want to thank you for that. We had amazing staff all over the district over the last week and a half or so, so thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else want to add to that comment? No? Okay, thanks. So that takes us on to our school board committee reports. So as far as standing committees go, do we have a report from Budget Development?
Yes. Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder.
Budget Development did meet on Wednesday, November 8th. And following the approval of the budget for the coming year, which took up a lot of time and space, we were, it was more of a regroup kind of session on a few of our key topics that we sort of regrouped on, including OPEB, athletic fees, compensation transition increments, and a number of other topics that we've kind of reset for ourselves and identified what needs to be done next, and that was, those will be proceeding over the coming meetings. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. We had a demo and trends meeting. Do you want to, do you want to do a little bit on that one, Abby? Thank you so much. Commissioner Bika's going, so yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep, not a problem. So we met on Thursday night last week at Prairie Ridge, and we had a tour of Prairie Ridge. And then we had an update on the High Clear development that is happening on the north side of Eau Claire and what the committee's next step would be. And basically, the committee has some work to do to determine which elementary school that those students would be attending. And so that's on the agenda for the next. And so, that's on the agenda for the next meeting to try to talk through that process. Then we talked a little bit about Prairie Ridge and the upcoming needs for space, and what would that look like? And we didn't, but we didn't get to spend as much time as we liked on that because we had some other things that we were talking about. The other thing that we were talking about and will be bringing forth to the board soon will be new committee members for the demo and trends group. So, just to let the board know, we had thirty-seven applicants, and so what we did is we shared all of the thirty-seven applicants' information with the committee members. We asked them to rank their top five, so then we could bring the top five forward to Dr. Hardabek as well as the board to make that final decision. And so, the committee, we talked a long time about what that should look like, and the committee does have some questions for the school board and Dr. Hardabek. And so, I'll be connecting with Dr. Hardabek to see how we want to handle what the committee's questions are and how we'd like to move forward with those appointments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We just kind of did the, read, did the committee policy relative to that process, so it'll take us a bit to work through that. Yeah, thank you, Abby. Thank you for doing that. The next one is shared service buses, but we didn't meet. I think we're meeting in January. Yep, so I will give you an update on LEAP. LEAP met last Tuesday. We are working on program needs going forward and having that conversation. We're in the process of going back through our policy and refining what our charge is. So, presently, it, it is stated as development of a structure to initiate, monitor, and sustain innovation zones. Our policy says to review yearly for the first five years. So, this will probably take place with the board as a review, probably in January. I'm hoping to maybe put it in a work session so that we can have that discussion. We did host November 9th, CISA 10 Board of Control did come. It was quite fun. I, I really, you know, wasn't aware that the Boards of Control at CISA, since I've never participated in that, really is made up of school board members, period. CISA 10 covers twenty-nine districts, so they must do an election process and people run to be on their Board of Control. So, if anybody on our board ever wants to do that, that opportunity is there. Commissioner, do I?
Don't we have a, a board member that's representative to CISA? Is it CISA 10?
It is, but it, they, they could go to those meetings, but they're not on the Board of Control. They're, they're just members that can go to the meeting.
Oh, we never seem to have any.
Yeah, well, the person that is on the CISA, assigned to the Cooperative Education Service Agency Delegate is Lori, is on that one. And maybe they haven't had a meeting. Yeah, they meet only a couple of times a year that the additional members go. Yeah, okay. So, let me see where I am here now. I'm not a, so what happened was, we had our documentary theater person there with their, with Amy, their teacher, and the students performed for the CISA 10 Board of Control. And they were able then to talk about their experiences of being part of the documentary theater. Some of the reflections, as I talked, were amazing, and they were talking about their friendships and how long they would last, and, and the, and the group, and the diversity of the group, and the fact that they, they found themselves and they were able to know who they were, they are as people. They, they talked about that. That's pretty cool. We also had teachers from North Star, from, from the Arctic Zone, and we had teachers there from Sam Davy, talked about their experiences as well with project-based learning. They, it was meant, it was received very well. Then they took a tour, and the, the board members had lots and lots of questions. They actually stayed a really long time. So, we have a community group also at Innovation Step Two, which will be coming to the board shortly. And we're also firming up our membership and term limits as part of our policy review since that was just kind of updated within the committee reports, and we need to make sure that we are abiding by that policy. So, we will work on that as well. And that's my LEAP report. And then we go on to policy and governance. Commissioner Luganville.
Yeah, we had a meeting this morning. We got an update on our SRO policy process, and obviously with some of the headlines in the news lately and some school incidents, that work that we had planned with that initial meeting of all of the stakeholders had to be put off. It's been rescheduled. So, our meeting will be actually, will have some folks at our committee, will be December 18th, because that initial group will be meeting on December 5th. But we also discussed today the Academic Recognition System subgroup of our committee, and then we also talked about governance. And our committee made a motion to recommend to the board that we have a work session to follow up on the board's self-evaluation process from last year, and also bring in the policy with that discussion. And then also, to have some corresponding governance policies that are existing on our books there for that discussion. So, we have a good opportunity to start that conversation there with some of those items. So, that was our suggestion, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. We have several other advisory committees and other committees. Does anybody have any? PAC is an advisory committee. Do you want to? Okay, Dr. Hardabek?
So, the PAC met the first Tuesday of the month, and they participated in a focus group about the parent survey. That was followed by presentation about the calendar and got some feedback from them, which will be shared with you tonight.
Yeah, that was, the meeting was suggested as they did their surveys, so it was suggested that I not attend that meeting, so Mary Ann has that information. Sometimes people don't fill out surveys if the board members are there.
I didn't attend either. It was facilitated by someone else.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything from any of the other committees? Seeing none, we take us on to the, let me grab my, stuck my paper under here somewhere. Take us on to our consent resolution agenda. So, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 6, 2017.
I'm trying to do legislative.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
I'll keep it quick. I have a little legislative update today.
Sorry, I missed that.
Because we've had some, that's okay. We've had some, some things have passed in the, in the Assembly and Senate now, and some are waiting for the governor's signature in the impact schools. So, I'll update you on the, the Leading on Lead bill, which our board passed a resolution supporting, basically about keeping kids safe from lead and helping lower-income families, updating their pipes and things like that. It passed in the Senate, but it failed in the Assembly. So, I'm hoping that they'll bring it back next, next session, and we can at least resend them our resolution at that time. Also, the Assembly has approved Assembly Bill 304. Under this bill, and it goes to the Senate now, but under this bill, what it basically does is it, the current opt-out law really just covers the state examination. This takes it beyond, and it makes it for any test in, in the school district. So, any test in class that has a grade attached to it, students would have the option to opt out. So, the, the WASB does not support it, but it is moving on to the Senate, so we'll see how that goes.
Joe, do you know, do you know where that bill came out of?
Well, it was authored by Jeremy Theisfeldt, I know that, and he's the chair of the Assembly Education Committee. So, it's number 304, if you want to look it up or, or write them about that to the senators, ask them to, you can ask them whatever you like. Then the Assembly also had a hearing on Bill Number 496, which you may have seen on the news. That provides local discretion to suspend or begin expulsion proceedings under circumstances in which a student brings a firearm onto school grounds. The WASB does support it, the reason being, there are a number of rural members who've brought it, because they have student trap teams that are actually on school grounds where they're bringing firearms for the purpose of the trap teams. So, it's just providing a local flexibility to boards. We still have the, the control to determine, but it's looking like that bill will have support in the Senate and will pass to provide that flexibility for the rural communities especially. And then there are two other bills. Finally, one from Representative Petrick, supporting school nutrition programs in the state, and may have some funding attached for people to do new programs. So, I reached out to him, and I've been in touch, but I'm trying to get more information to see if we should maybe do a resolution on it. And then there's also a bill from Terry Moulton's office, which is getting some traction, supporting hunter safety education in Wisconsin, and, and really pushing DPI to actually develop a hunter safety curriculum that they support, to have across the state, a uniform curriculum, which really probably couldn't hurt now that they got rid of the minimum hunting age to have that. So, once I find out more information about that, maybe we'll do a resolution on that, too, depending on where that sits. But it, there's only about two months left of the session, so it's kind of crunch time for folks to get their bills out of committee and onto the floor. So, that's all I've got. The testing opt-out bill is Assembly Bill 304. And if you search it, you'll get the, the Senate number, which won't be the same number probably, but it'll be next to it.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. I am so sorry, I forgot about the legislative report. So, we'll take it on to the consent resolution agenda. Board members can pull items that they want further discussion on or explanation. So, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 6, 2017. The minutes of closed session, November 6, 2017. The financial report from October 2017. The 2017-18 budget adjustments. Gifts in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-two cents for the period of October 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2017. Thank you very much for those gifts. Payment of all bills in the amount of six million six hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, and net payroll in the amount of three million five hundred and nineteen dollars, one hundred, five hundred and nineteen thousand and one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents for the period of October 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2017. The Human Resources Employment Report. And revisions to Policy 825, distribution of non-school-related materials. Do I have a motion?
I have my line on.
Commissioner Dux.
I move approval of the resolutions 6.2 through 6.9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Commissioner Luganville. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Patty? Thank you so much.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves us on to our individually considered resolution, and I want to pull it up here, which is the scheduled work sessions in the 2018 summer/fall meetings. And if you pull it up on your board docs, I just noted one meeting when I looked at it that it was on there twice, so, and it's because we're gonna do a short. So, it's recommended that the scheduled work sessions on those dates, May 21st, but then May 7th and 21st are also board meetings.
The, the listing on the top is just the work session dates?
Yep.
So, it is repeated down below, but that's when we, you're also voting in the summer my schedule.
I got you, I got you, okay. That makes sense. Okay. Is that, I mean, is that good with everybody? And if it is, can I entertain a motion, please? Any discussion? Seeing that, discussion?
No, I would move to accept that.
Okay, go ahead.
And all seconded.
Good. Commissioner Harder, second by Commissioner Luganville. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is our schedule. And that's nice for everybody to know that ahead of time. So, thank you for the work on that. Then that takes us to, we're gonna adjourn to committee, and the first thing on our committee reports is the draft of the 2018-19 school year calendar. And that's, Kay, Kay, thank you. We won't make you say your name and your address, okay? Just kidding.
Okay, so, the recommendation for the 18-19 school year calendar is, there's two different versions of this, of the calendar options. The feedback that went into drafting the calendar had to do with sharing the revisions with the building principals, talking to, during meet-and-confer sessions with employee groups, and then having the information presented to the Parent Advisory Council. And so, it was due to the information from the Parent Advisory Council that we came up with version number two. So, before we dive into the details of both versions, I can tell you that regardless of which version the board elects to go with, there are some consistencies on each of them that have been the same for the past three school years. And that includes the teacher contract days being one hundred and eighty-nine in both calendars, there being one hundred and seventy elementary school instructional days, one hundred and seventy-two middle and high school instructional days, enough excess minutes, because if you remember, we went from counting days to counting hours of instruction, to be able to meet the requirements for DPI. And we have enough excess minutes built into both of these calendars to be able to absorb four inclement weather days, and then we have identified a fifth, that would be a professional development IP day in the spring, in the event that we would need that one. But if we don't, then we would continue on with our PDIP activities. There's one professional development instructional planning day, oh, that's the one I just talked about, identified as the fifth. And then there are nine professional development instructional planning days embedded into each calendar. Three of those occur before the school year starts for staff, and then six of them are embedded within the school year, strategically placed throughout the year to coincide with bringing staff together to talk about student data and achievement. So, those pieces are all the same regardless of version one or version two. One of the modifications that was made to version one includes in November, as it stands this year, we're actually in those days right now, the 20th and 21st for this year, the calendar was set up in a way that didn't make it possible for our classified staff to take part in the PDIP work that the certified staff takes part in, because it was on opposite days. So, that was something that was raised both by the principals as well as the classified group during meet-and-confer sessions. So, we modified that going into 18-19 so that all of those employees are available to work together and collaborate on the PDIP days. So, that's modified in both version one and version two. But compared to what we have this year, the only change in version one is, is exactly what I just got done talking about, those November dates, to make sure that everybody's available to do the work on PDIP days. Other than that, this calendar has just rolled forward and totally reflects what it is we're doing now and what we've been doing for the past several years. However, in version two, after having presented the information to the Parent Advisory Council, there are modifications that were recommended by that group in both April, I'm sorry, both October and April. And so, if you look at October, thank you, Patty. So, here, they've moved the, and it was similar to what Ryan had spoke about earlier, making one long extended weekend versus two shortened ones, two shortened work weeks. So, that same thing happens in both October and April. So, in April, the 22nd, that day had been earlier in the calendar in April, so either on the 12th or the 5th, that would have been a day off, and then again, a couple of weeks later, having the 19th off. And so, parents said that they would rather not have two weeks interrupted, just have one time interrupted and have it be a longer time period, and so that's why both the October and April months have been modified in version two. Other than that, everything's identical to what we do now.
Okay, didn't we get some feedback in meet-and-confer, too, about one of these weekends being a longer weekend?
You mean the April one? Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep, that was part of, and so it was consistent with both meet-and-confer and the parents indicating that it would be better to not have two shortened ones, or shortened weeks, just have that one extended weekend in April, rather than having the, the modified, the two weeks being modified this way. It's only that one time, but they're back-to-back in each week so that parents and families can have additional time together.
Did we have input from staff on that option at all?
Yes, from meet-and-confer.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Dux?
So, the April would be, they would be off the 19th through the 20th, so?
Correct. Correct.
And then, November would be Thanksgiving week? Or October, sorry.
October, the change in October would go from having the 12th off, so we're, in October, where the 29th is blue and that's a day off, in version one, that day is on the 12th. And so, through that feedback, it got moved to the 29th so that there's only one interruption. It's just a longer period of interruption.
Yeah, when did they start that, the 25th or the 26th?
The 25th is no school.
Okay.
Because there's parent-teacher conferences, but the high school's in session on the 25th.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
That whole week in November, too?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
I'm just curious, has it been done in the past where we look at calendar like this two to three years ahead of time?
When we used to bargain the calendar, you know, through the master agreements with the unions, yes, this was done sometimes as much as four years in advance. We've been hesitant to do that as we've worked through this new calendar and making sure that each year we have enough opportunity to solicit input from those varying groups. This year, actually, Mr. Schmidt and I talked pretty extensively about going in 18-19 and in 19-20, but then after the, the changes came up for April and October, which were new because we hadn't experienced, you know, those comments before, we thought we should try it this way for a year to make sure that we had heard the input, made the modifications, see how that goes for a year, and if there, if everybody's content with those two changes, then we could probably look to go out more than one year at a time. But we hadn't simply because we were making sure that each year we had an opportunity to get feedback before we were stuck into a calendar that, that had been several years old, we had, don't, didn't have an opportunity to modify.
I think it's a good idea to have a draft, even though it's not final, but to look ahead for planning purpose.
Yep, I would agree, and I think that we do that each year because, because there's been so little input into making modifications, it's simply just rolling it forward. So, whenever, even when people ask about spring break and it's, you know, a year in advance, we always make sure that spring, spring break is partnered with UWEC so that, because there's so many partnerships between the two organizations, that to be on separate weeks off really puts a damper on the partnerships that our students get, because we lose a week when we're off, and then we lose a week when the UWEC students are off. So, we always make sure that the calendar's built around that partnership.
Can I, can I ask about the partnership with busing and, and the Regis Catholic Schools? I noted that they did not have this Monday and Tuesday off, so busing must have gone on, and then we pay for that busing?
Correct.
Two additional days. So, I just noted that, wondering if we can have a conversation with them so that they could be on the same schedule so that we're not busing two additional days when we're not busing our own kids.
I believe that when the calendar first went into effect, and if Tim were here, he'd be able to speak to it more eloquently, but I believe that those conversations took place when we first went to this, you know, kind of different calendar, and there wasn't interest on their part to follow suit.
Maybe the budgets were a little bit different then, so I'm just thinking, can we, I mean, it's probably not a lot of savings, but it might be something we should look at. Sorry. Any other comment?
I like option two.
Would you like to do a motion, then? I like option two, too.
So, in terms of, yeah, in terms of, of making a motion, you'd make a motion during the next session of being individually considered item. No, no, I know, but?
I'm just a little mixed up.
If and when you would like to make a motion.
Any other discussion? I can move us on then to, yeah, to the community outreach Google Doc update. My name is on that one, I just pulled it up. We've got some dates out in January and April and June, if people want to get on there and get their name on. I did put my name on for the Family Fest at the Indoor Sports Center, and hopefully we'll be adding more dates to this as well. January 20th, 11 to 3. So, does everybody have access to that? Okay. Okay. The Google Doc. So, Terry Piper Thompson sent it out in a link, so if you Google her name, then you should be able to take it and drag it right on your desktop. So, I can just click on it, and it's updated, and things are added to it all the time. And if you want to stay after tonight quick, we can find it and I'll help you do it, okay? That way you can take a look at it. Charles, I put you in, I mean, I got you and Catherine down for the, among New Year, the day you both were there, so you're on the doc already, I stuck you on, put you on there, okay? Anybody else? I just wanted to bring it up, and I think I might bring it up and kind of go over those things at each meeting or every other meeting so that we've got you into that Google Doc. Thanks for pulling that up, Patty, okay? I'm going to put the, the Veterans Day, the Community Veterans Day at North Star, because Catherine and I were at that one, so we'll put that, I'll stick that one on, okay? Thank you. Anything else on that, any comments? Nope, seeing none, we can head on to the bond refinancing discussion, and Abby's already up there. Thanks, Abby.
You're welcome. So, we added this to the, the agenda because I got a phone call last week with some exciting news that the board wants to, we should probably consider, so that's why we're here tonight. And so, I'm, have a presentation, and I have Debbie Shafeltowski here from RW Baird, in case we have questions as well that I can answer, because this is not always my area of expertise. So, one of the things that has been proposed is what's called the Tax, Tax Cut and Jobs Act, and this bill is proposed in the Senate and also a version in the House, and I learned this morning that the, the House vote was, was approved, and now it's moving on to the Senate. And so, there is anticipation that this could go through, and what that bill does is it actually removes the ability to basically refinance bonds. Some of the bonds that we've issued in the past have what's called advanced refunding, which gives you an opportunity at a point in time to do some refinancing, to look at where you're at and some potential cost savings. And so, the bill that's proposed will take that away from us. And so, we do have one issue that's in that, that area, and it's an issue that we did in November of 2011 related to the referendum. And so, so I got a call from Mike, who works with Debbie last week, to say, hey, this is going on out there, you might want to talk to your board, because they might want to consider this. And so, that's what I wanted to just kind of talk you through tonight and help you understand in an effort, and give you some opportunities to ask questions, we should see if this is something that you're interested in doing or not. So, right now, the interest rate on those bonds that were issued averages about 4%, which isn't a terrible rate, but in today's market, we could potentially refinance at a 3% rate, which would be about a million dollar savings for us over the, you know, the terms of the bonds. And so, it's about a million dollars, and the important part to keep in mind is that is directly passed on to the taxpayers because it's debt and we levy what our debt payments are. And so, I thought that it would be important to share that. The other thing that's really important is that this has a very short timeline, because if it does pass in the Senate, it is likely to be in effect starting January 1st, and so that shrinks the timeline if it's something we want to do in order to get all of that, that part done. The proposed plan, which I'll show you in this presentation, we would still pay off the debt in 2031, which is when we anticipated paying off those bonds, so we're not changing the timeline of when we would pay them off, we're just looking at refinancing to be able to have some cost savings. So, those considerations of things that we would want to consider is, you know, the Tax Reform Act, that's really the bill that's bringing this to our attention, there's some cost savings to the district, that short timeframe to complete the sale, the potential volume of issues coming to the market, and what I mean by that is there's lots and lots of districts jumping on this bandwagon saying, hey, we have an opportunity to save some money, so the market is seeing lots and lots of this, because it's not just a Wisconsin thing, it's a nationwide thing, and so there's quite the opportunity right now for looking at that. And then, there could be some flexibility with the sale, and depending on what the board's wishes are, we might look at, typically bond sales happen on a Monday, we might want to look at a different day because that may give some additional flexibility to us, and maybe the rates would look a little bit different if we've picked an odd day to do that. So, again, do we want to be proactive and how do we want to move forward with this? I do have a sample timeline out there of kind of what that would look like, because we know that that timeline is very short. So, the first date is tonight, and that's because I'm bringing you the information about the option. We would work with Baird, and I would work with Baird, to move in that direction if the board is thinking that they want to do that, because there's some work on the front end that we could do. Then we would bring back for an individually considered item on December 4th, the option for the board to say, yes, we do want to move forward with the refinance, and there's a couple different types of ways that we could proceed, and so I want to talk with you through that, so that way I kind of know what to present to you. December 5th through December 8th, we would finalize our bond rating, if that's the choice that the board, you know, if the board wants to move in that direction, then we would get that finalized. And then, Baird would be monitoring the market for us, kind of the 5th through the 18th, to see when is the best time to try to lock in those rates for us for the district and get a savings for us. And then, we would want to close prior to December 31st, 2017, again, to be able to take advantage of those lower, those options, because we're, we're anticipating that January 1st, that's going to go away. We don't know that yet, but again, we're just trying to be proactive. So, I just mentioned that there was two options to be able to look at refinancing those bonds. Option one is what's called a parameters resolution, and what that looks like is we would actually bring a, bring a option for the board to say, we want to refinance, but here's the criteria that we want to have. Maybe it's a minimum cost savings, maybe it's, you know, structuring the payments a different way. Typically, because we would be looking at not doing it on a board meeting Monday, then the board would designate two people to act on behalf of the district to complete that, because once the bids are locked in, there's paperwork that we need to get signed, and in order to offer that flexibility to not do it on a Monday when people typically go to bond issue, because, you know, that's a board meeting date, kind of like our cash flow borrowing that we had last time, we had the sale in the morning and we closed, you know, we had ever, the board approve it that night, that would kind of give some flexibility. And so, with that parameters options, the board could define and say, we want to designate these people, we need a minimum cost savings, and, you know, anything else that the board would wish to consider as part of, you know, a decision-making to refinance those bonds. The other option is under private placement, and what that is, is really just going to a local bank or local banks and saying, hey, we have these bonds that we'd like to issue, you know, and not go through the credit rating process and kind of do it different than we have done, and that's certainly an option, but you, we may not get the best interest rate if we do that. It might be quicker as far as the timeline goes, because there's not the official statement and the bond call and things like that, but again, where do we want that flexibility? What do we want to look like? And then, really, the third option, which isn't listed here, would be to not do anything. And so, that's, you know, that's an option, too, we wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we don't have to do anything, this is just an option that is out there that we would, might want to consider. The next slides just kind of talk through a little bit more of the options that we just talked about. Again, so with option one, the parameters resolution might provide some flexibility in how we look at the payments, interest rate, cost savings, and if there's anything else that the board would want to decide. And again, we would, we would require that those bonds close by December 31st, so that way, then we don't have to get in, to be worried about if that bill passes, what does that look like for us? And again, the board would have really the decision and the recommendation to say, if we are going to designate two people to act on behalf of the district, what do those parameters look like to ensure that we're making the best decision for the district? Again, private placement, you, we don't have a bond rating call, we don't go through the official statement, and by going with a bank, you could be subjecting yourself to higher interest rates, but that is an option as well as refinancing.
Can I ask you a question about that, Abby?
Yeah.
So, when you talk about a private bank and doing it local? Which we like to do with things, and the bank could have a higher interest rate, would that mean we could look and find out if they do, or would it change over time and become higher?
It could be either way. It depends on what the, what the banks are doing and what they're looking at. Usually, when we go to market, we know exactly what the rates are going to be, and when you go to a private placement, it could be different depending on that bank. And I don't know, Debbie, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, can you come on, please?
Yeah.
That's okay. Thank you. So, typically, when we talk private placement with an issue your size, a loan your size, the typical person or company who would purchase it wouldn't be in, here in Eau Claire, it would be another bank or life insurance company further away. So, can I, can we go to the schedule so I can show them?
Yeah.
Oh, right here. So, the, the sample that Abby is showing you is about thirty-one million dollars in, left of that issue to refinance, and so that would, a private placement would, there, as Mike would say, be select banks or purchasers of that likely wouldn't stay in Eau Claire. I didn't explain that very eloquently, but did I do okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Vu?
So, if I got it right, we are looking at refinancing that thirty-one million dollar, and we would be saving over a million dollar in the duration of the loan life. So, the question then is, if you were to refinance, what is the cost for refinancing? And if you were able to save at all, can we cut the length of the loan shorter?
I can. So, that, those are two very good questions. The, the first question you asked about the cost of issuance, that includes the cost of issuance, so the million dollars is what the district would actually see in levy savings? And then, and I, I don't have on here the exact cost of issuance, so Abby can find that and let you know, but this million dollars is the net savings to the district. Then your second question related to shortening it, that is an option as well, and that would be set with the parameters resolution and with the financing structure.
Commissioner Harder?
So, kind of follow on to Commissioner Vu's question of sort of, just trying to highlight the risks for us of, of this step. I mean, it seems like a no-brainer, why would we not want to save a million dollars? And so, I put it to you, why might we not want to save a million dollars?
I don't think there is a good reason to not go for it.
No, no real risk that you can think of?
Not really that I can think of. I think we're in a good place, too, we just issued debt in April, and so I think that because we had a favorable bond rating at that point in time, you know, that process is going to be very similar to what we did. I think anytime that you've got an opportunity to have that kind of savings, I think it's worth our time to look at it, especially because it's going directly to the taxpayers, you know, essentially, our tax levy would be, what's affected as we get there. Another thing I wanted to highlight on this preliminary, kind of a hypothetical refinancing is you can see the left-hand column is what we're looking at today, that's our debt schedule today, and you could see that the first two years, we wouldn't change any of the payments of that, because we're, our first payment of principal is to happen in the twenty, 2020 year, and so we wouldn't change our payment for 2020 or 2021. And what that does then is that pays down some principal, and again, helps us with that savings, because you've got a lower interest rate there. When Mike and I talked, we didn't talk about shortening up the length of the loan, because we know that we have, all of our debt currently will be paid off in 2031, so we didn't talk about how could that look different, but we could certainly have them, you know, run and look at that. One of the things that our goal is with our debt service is we want to try to keep that tax levy, you know, fairly level and not have big swings, and so if we were to shorten this up, you know, it, we'd have to look at what would that tax impact be to our taxpayer, and without running it and having them help, I wouldn't know exactly, but we could certainly look at that and see if it's something that we want to do, just to see. And this was very, you know, this is just an estimate as where things were looking last week when he was looking at all of the bills, and so there's no guarantees, but this is a very conservative estimate of what he believes, you know, when they're running the numbers of what we would likely to be able to save. So, the million, it's just over a million dollars there, it could actually be higher depending on, you know, all of those factors that we kind of talked about, so.
Do you have another question?
I do. So, that would be part of our, could be part of our parameters is?
Absolutely.
We don't want to, if it's less than a million or whatever, we can say, forget it.
Exactly.
And, and you've described this as an opportunity to reissue debt, but I, my understanding of it was it's more, I mean, the opportunity was always available to us, but what we're seeing is we're going to potentially lose the opportunity to reissue debt?
Right. Right.
-because of this law.
Right.
So just to clarify that.
Yep. So, so in this particular issue, when we issued the debt, there was the option for advance refunding. And so what this bill does is it takes away, it removes that option for advance refunding. And so I think this is the only issue that we have that in when we issued that debt back in 2011. And so that's why it's the opportunity now. And my understanding of the bill is that it's going to go away, and it's not going to be there. I don't know if I'm understanding that or describing it correctly, but can you add-
Can I add just a bit, please? Okay. And I, if I can, just for those who may be listening and not like finance as much as others. So for many of us, if you, if you think of a home mortgage, where if interest rates go down, you can refinance at any time, when municipalities, school districts, counties, villages issue debt, oftentimes, they, they agree to wait a period of time before they're able to prepay. We call that, that date in which you can start prepaying a call date. And in return, you get a lower interest rate, because you agree not to refinance for a period of time. So what this bill, and so what this bill does is you are able, you were able, in that, the life of that loan, and we call it an issue, to, to refinance early, they call it an advance refunding, and you can do it once in the life of your loan. Once it's prepayable, then you can refinance at any time. So this bill takes away that one opportunity for each issue to advance refund. For this, you, you had said, what, what is the downside? The, the potential is that if, if you had waited until 2122, if interest rates suddenly drop drastically, at that time, if you would have refinanced, you could have had savings. We just don't know what the market will do. Did I explain, explain that okay?
I think so, but if I understood then, we could, it might be advantageous to wait and see where the interest rates are going, but the risk of waiting is that we could lose entirely the capability of doing, you know, the capability of refinancing could just go away on January 1st potentially, wasn't it?
Your, your ability to advance refund, if everything passes as stated, could go away January 1st. And then if you wanted to refinance, you would have to wait until the callable date, which is out in, in the 2122 school year. And at that point, we would be subject to whatever the interest rates were then, which we, we don't know what they would be.
Commissioner Duex?
Thank you.
Remind me again, who's giving this opportunity? Where does this opportunity come from?
I can, I can tell you that Baird called and said, this is happening in the Senate and the House, and we don't know if it's going to go forward as a bill or not, but we're concerned about it. And so, yeah. Yep. Yep. You're welcome.
This might not be a good question, and maybe you can't answer it, but why would somebody want to take that advanced refunding away?
That's a good question. That's a good question, and I'm not, I'm not the expert. But it's part of the bill that's talking about corporate tax reform and the state tax deduction.
I've been following it closely. So why, why take it away?
The, from what I understand, it's so that, it's, it's regarding taxes of municipal bonds. So it's the, that revenue portion for municipal security.
So, so public entities, like public schools, city, city municipalities, were being treated like a corporation?
Tell me more about that.
Well, is this something that's being done for corporate, so that-
Oh.
Yeah.
I understand your question. So the reason why it impacts municipalities different is we are able to issue tax-exempt debt, and this is a tax-exempt bond, and corporations don't have that tax-exempt authority. It's because we're municipalities that we receive it. And so it's making, if I can brush with broad stroke, it's making school districts' borrowing look a little more corporate.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Any other, Commissioner, who are you? Commissioner Luganville, you know, sometimes I look and I go, sorry, Joe. Thank you. A little levity tonight.
I, I, this is the kind of thing where it'd be nice to have a crystal ball, of course, but with, with the information that we have, this makes the most sense. I will say, what I know about this Senate bill is it's been moving really fast. It passed out of its Senate committee. It, it needs 50 votes. So, but our Senator Ron Johnson has come out saying he does not support it. So, and I guess there are at least five other members in the majority who have concerns. So there is hope, but I, but again, I think that, there's no way of knowing, so I, I do feel this is a good, a good option.
His objection, I think, is for small business, that's what he said. So he's just trying to improve their, their levity.
I'm just thinking, too, you know, public schools, we just, we just have to, we have to fight our way back, and I don't, I don't want to leave it up for chance. I don't think we can do that anymore, so. Okay, thank you for the, and anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Hold on just a second, I'm not quite done.
Oh, I'm sorry, Abby.
That's okay.
Isn't it nice that we all know about the tax bills?
It is. It's wonderful. It makes me very happy, because it was not one that was on my radar when I got the phone call, and I was like, oh.
Not intricately, but we know what you're talking about.
Yes. So basically, next steps, you know, I'm just wondering how you would like me to bring this to the board, if you want me to bring it back on December 4th, if it's something you're interested in doing? And if so, which option would you want me to bring forth, or do you want me to bring forth both? I just want to make sure that I have a very clear understanding of where you're sitting at and what you would like, because that timeline is very short, and I want to make sure that we get done and move, if we are going to do this, that I can kind of start that ball rolling and get it woven in the right direction.
I'm hearing the board kind of wanting to do this. I think the, it was the option one, but anybody else want to add to that?
Yeah, parameter resolution seems like the way to go.
Okay. Are there specifics? Do you want to think about what specific parameters would be and let me know? Or, I think the standard ones that I've heard and that I've talked with Baird about would be, you know, cost savings and looking at interest rate, and then, you know, anything else that the board would wish to consider. And I think maybe Dr. Harvick has something to add.
So I, you know, I think that, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think that we're not experts in this area. And so I, I would say that it would be helpful for you to put together an option. We could send that out in our Friday letter. If there are questions, there would be plenty of time to ask those questions and get answers for the board. And then we could bring it forward as a, either an individually considered item, or we could put it on the consent agenda if everyone is, seems to be in agreement and understanding.
Don't like a plan?
That sounds like a great plan.
Very good. Any other further discussion? There is none. Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Baird, for alerting us. Yeah. Anybody from the audience want to come up, have any comment? I always forget about that. Yeah, yeah. Seeing none, we'll go on to the discussion and possible first reading of Policy 674, online solicitations, crowdfunding, and crowdsourcing. Would you like to preempt that a little bit? Commissioner Luganville, please?
I certainly can. This was a sample policy that was brought to us by Abby Johnson, just as a, there's been a real uptick in employees using these sites, and they, they really have great capability, capabilities, and really can do a lot of good for schools and students. But we have kind of found that it's important to have some clarity and some uniformity across the board with it. Some of these sites can connect to an individual's checking account, and, and so you could have a situation where someone is soliciting funds on behalf of an organization, but it's funds that go to them. And so it's not going through our process, through our business office, our finance department. So the real goal of this is just to have a streamlined process, and also that the business office of the school district would retain a list in their office of all of the approved sites to use, because of course, there's liability involved and other things. And, and of course, we're held to a pretty high standard as a public governing body, so to, to have that, that control over it is important. So that's what you have here.
Can I make a comment, too? We talked for a long time about sites that hold money back, or if you don't use it all, you don't get it back. And so I think it's, it, we need to be aware of those things and have sites that are a little more friendly that way.
Right.
I have a question.
Commissioner Duex?
I'm not familiar with these, these words, so could you define crowdfunding and crowdsourcing?
Yeah. So crowdfunding would be like a practice of basically what it sounds like. You're raising money through the internet, through small amounts of a large number of people, a large crowd of people. So it would be like, if you've ever seen like the GoFundMe send out, you know, we're trying to raise money for a new classroom gerbil, you know, and small donations of $2, get it to the $100, and you can go to PetSmart and buy a new gerbil, you know, or whatever. So that's a dumb example, but, you know.
It kind of goes with the night, Joe, you know? There you go.
I'm going to go get a gerbil now or something, I don't know. And I, and I think crowdsourcing is pretty much the same, the same thing. It's, they're just kind of used interchangeably. So, but like the most well-known sites, if you've seen them, GoFundMe, there's the one that Donors Choose, Adopt a Classroom, yeah. And there was one that actually, it's, it's on the list, I know, of approved ones, but it's the one that Senator Herb Cole, last year, very famously, when he logged on to that site, took out his credit card or whatever, and paid for every Wisconsin teacher request on the site. So, I mean, they, they can be pretty powerful to use, so we definitely don't want to inhibit staff's ability to use them. We just want to make sure it's done in the right way that protects us and protects them.
Commissioner Duex?
Did your committee talk about the possible conflict with the work of the foundation, Public Schools Foundation, with individual teachers soliciting, even though people have wish lists on the website? I'm concerned about that individual effort as opposed to our work with the Public Schools Foundation.
I, I guess we didn't really get into how, because they're very different, using the crowdsourcing sites versus using the foundation. We certainly don't want to limit the ability for teachers to work through the foundation with this. This is more dealing with the external sites that are, that the, the sites themselves are beyond our jurisdiction, but people are using them. So I, I don't know if that answers it, but.
Oh, I, I haven't thought about it enough to give you a concise concern, but except that I think it can be confusing to the public to see multiple requests for a classroom or a project, when we have a lot of scholarships available that we give out for projects. And, I don't know, it just seems like it would be somewhat in conflict to me, to some of the other work we're doing, so.
Well, as we read through this polit, you know, as we read through this tonight, there might be a way to make a statement about that, meaning is there a protocol that you go to the foundation first or, or whatever? You know, I don't know. We'll have to just read it through and-
Oh, sorry. In here, it puts, it really puts it on the principle to, to work with that individual to help really guide them through what, what they're doing. And so I think that it would kind of be a part of that process, perhaps, where maybe it works best to work with the foundation, or maybe if you're trying to do something else, maybe it's, maybe it's Adopt a Classroom. But I think that we do put that in here, that, that it's really the, the principle is that next step, so hopefully-
I think there is an answer in there, so if we read it out loud, maybe-
Sounds good.
I've read it a couple of times, but.
Joe, do you want to start? We'll just go down and see how far we get. Thank you.
The Eau Claire Area School District supports fundraising activities that are designed to promote educational and extracurricular activities without interfering with the educational process. ECASD employees shall comply with all of the following provisions relating to online solicitations and the use of crowdfunding services or crowdsourcing for school-related purposes. All property and proceeds received as a result of online fundraising or solicitation via a crowdfunding and crowdsourcing service become the property of the district. All funds raised by student organizations/clubs under this policy for the organization/club's specific activities shall be under the fiduciary control of the board and shall be managed by the district as agency funds in accordance with sound business practices and generally accepted accounting principles similar to other district funds. As a result, no online fundraising may occur except as provided below. One, employees may only use crowdfunding, crowdsourcing services that have been pre-approved by the Executive Director of Business Services. A list will be maintained by the business office and posted as an exhibit to this policy. The district's utilization of such services underneath the terms of this policy shall be in the capacity of an independent contractor and not that of an agent, partner, joint venture, joint employer, co-owner, or employee of the district. Two, the building principal or department director shall approve all online fundraising activities prior to any employee posting any such fundraising solicitation. Three, to the extent an employee solicits any technology or software, the employee shall work with their principal to secure the prior written approval of the director of technology or their designee prior to any such solicitation. Four, to the extent an employee solicits any furniture or facility improvement needs, the employee shall work with their principal to secure the prior written approval of the director of buildings and grounds or their designee prior to any such solicitation.
The employee must verify under the crowdfunding services terms and conditions that he or she meets all requirements for such solicitation. Six, any employee seeking to display or post a photograph of any Eau Claire Area School District student in conjunction with a fundraising solicitation must first secure the written consent of the student's parent. Such written consent must be in compliance with the requirements of the district's directory data requirements and pupil records policy. Seven, if an employee's proposal is approved by the crowdfunding crowdsourcing service, the employee agrees to use the donated materials solely as stated in the employee's proposal. If a solicitation is not fully funded within the time period required by the crowdfunding crowdsourcing service, the district will review next steps with the employee.
Nine, if for any reason a solicitation cannot be concluded, for example, the employee no longer works at the original school or district, the district shall work with the principal to see how to best reallocate funds and/or equipment to the school. Ten, any solicitation shall be for educational purposes only and shall be pre-approved by the Executive Director of Business Services. Eleven, all goods and/or proceeds solicited and received through any online solicitation shall become the property of the district and not of the individual employee who solicited the item or items or funds. The employee is prohibited from taking any such items or funds to another school, district, or location.
Twelve, student participation in any school-based fundraising activity shall be strictly voluntary. All other student fundraising activities not addressed in the preceding paragraph shall have prior permission from, one, the building principal, and, two, if applicable, the athletics director for athletics fundraisers, or the relevant student activity advisor for fundraisers by other extracurricular activity groups or student clubs, organizations. Thirteen, employees who wish to solicit funds in a personal capacity shall comply with Policy and Rule 524, staff solicitation and/or selling.
Any discussion? Whoops, Commissioner Duex?
It just feels, it feels pretty good, but it feels like there's kind of a step missing, and coordination, I think, has to go through the superintendent and the principals. And I, I'm feeling like that wish list that's on the foundation website needs to be considered. And having worked with the allocations committee for several years- And having worked with the allocations committee for several years, we have come up with, and probably you've talked to Sarah French, who's the executive director of the foundation, we have kind of redone our, our list of, what am I going to say? Of priorities with the committee. For instance, we've had a lot of requests for wobble chairs and different kinds of furniture, and we decided that we're just not going to do that, because everybody wants it and we don't have those kind of funds. And so, Mr. Schmidt has helped us, and he's going to be advisor to the allocations committee, because there are a lot of curricular requests and things that we are just not aware of how, how to judge whether they're being supplied in another part of the budget or not. So, I just, I think we just need to make sure we're coordinated in how we're approaching all of this.
Commissioner Luganville?
My hope is that we could be, that we can be, I think one, one reason why I don't think that this will inhibit that partnership is because we still have separate policies for other types of donations and other types of, of other types of fundraising. So, this is very specific to just crowdsourcing and crowdfunding, which doesn't, which doesn't even interact with the foundation, because it's different from requesting foundation funds from an organization. This is going to the public and saying, "Will you, will you click the $5 button and give to this cause?" So, it's just a different ballgame. So, I'm hopeful that having these guidelines specific to that type of fundraising wouldn't, wouldn't impact the other types of current fundraising. This is just to clarify that specific kind.
And I would agree with that, but I think it's a start.
Right.
And as we get into the weeds on it and any problems that may arise, we will know how to adjust it.
Yeah.
At least, at least we've talked about it.
Maybe we can add on the end that the policy should be during its first several years, that needs to be reviewed once a year. We've put that on a couple of other policies.
Certainly.
Would that, be good to add that? Okay. Commissioner Torres?
I don't know if we have asked the principal's opinion about this, because that will be the responsibility.
Yeah, it came through, it came through administration and the exec committee. Dr. Hardbeck?
So, you know, within the school budget, the principal is the person who's ultimately responsible for managing that budget and managing and working with the Executive Director of Business Services. So typically, when there are fundraising activities, those go through either the principal or the athletic director at the high school, or the person who does the budget management at those levels. And so, it would be important to connect, particularly, I think, if crowdsourcing is being used. I don't think that this policy was reviewed by the principals. We could certainly take it to a principal meeting and have them do that. But I think it's kind of part of their day-to-day operations in terms of working with fundraising.
Commissioner Duex?
Where, where does the PTO, PTA land on this? You know, that's the other question, because they do a lot of fundraising. And, and maybe we're just talking about the form of it rather than the actual fundraising, but you see where I'm going with this. And I think we have to think about all the, all those things.
Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, this, does it, if I'm reading this correctly, does this only speak to employees, this particular policy? Or does it extend, doesn't seem to extend to, to parent teachers? I mean, is that, that's kind of your point, yeah?
I think Abby has. Can I, can I share? The PTOs and PTA's typically fundraise on their own, and their funds do not typically run through the district when they're doing the fundraising. They're going into an account separate that is usually housed outside of the district. Now, they're making donations to the district, but, and that comes usually in the form of a check or the purchase of an item and donated. But as far as the fundraising, none of that's happening through, through our promotion or anything like this. That doesn't mean to say that maybe it shouldn't, you know, maybe the principal shouldn't be aware of this type. But this specifically is an issue within the buildings. And we, what we find is that a lot of times, these grants are being solicited online and are happening online, and the principals, and even us, we don't even know about it till the gift report shows up. Or if it's furniture, like the furniture literally shows up at the school, and everybody's like, "Oh, we didn't know this was coming here." So, because it is so popular, and it's a great way to raise money or get things for your school, many districts are finding they just need to put some parameters on it. And one of the things that we talked about at P&amp;G was GoFundMe. And our stance on GoFundMe has been, we stay away from that, because there are fees that come right off the top. They're typically going outside of the district into a different account, and it doesn't necessarily have to follow the district's purchasing and the guidelines procedures. So, that's one that we've just said, "No way, Jose, we're not interested in looking at that." And so, when I met with P&amp;G, we talked a lot about having a pre-approved list of, "These are okay, because there aren't additional fees." And, you know, we've kind of vetted them through to ensure that, as people are donating, that those, that that money's actually being used for what that request is. And I don't disagree with you at all about, should, should there be something related to the foundation? But this policy is very specific to that online piece. And perhaps, P&amp;G would want to review the donations policy and, and see how that compares to some of this newer language as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Luganville?
I want to answer errands too about this. This does really just relate to ECASD employees, with the exception of, I think, one clause in here about how if it's student organizations within the school raising money for school purposes, that would apply as well. This is primarily for ECASD employees acting as an agent of the district, as representative of the district, so. But from my clarity, I heard someone mention adding to the bottom of this policy a review every year?
Just at the initial couple of years of the policy.
Okay. So, if we add that, do people, do people have any other changes they want to make to it? Or will that be good? But then, with your concerns, Commissioner Duex, and what Abby just said, maybe we can add to our workflow to look at the other donation policy to see if it needs to be updated as a result of this? Is that, okay?
So, do I have somewhat consensus of the board to move it forward? Commissioner Torres?
We also needed to ask for input from the principals.
Okay.
So, we could take the policy, you're asking to take the policy out to them before we move it forward? Okay? And then, we'll have a report on that, I guess?
When is the next principal's meeting?
It is last Thursday in November. So, we should have, we should have feedback for you at first.
Meeting in December?
So, the hope would be that we can still keep this, can we put this as an individually considered resolution at the meeting? And before that, share the feedback, or potentially share it in a Friday letter? Or do you?
I can share any feedback.
I can share the feedback in a, in a Friday letter.
Okay. And then, the hope would be to keep it on the agenda for the 4th then still, unless if it's?
Can we, can we put it in the Friday letter and then keep it as an individually considered item, just in case people have questions?
That would work, good.
All right. So be it. Thank you, Board. Request for future agenda items? Does anybody from the audience have any input on that one? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering.
You want to please come to the microphone, state your name, address, please? We just have to do that as a formality, sorry.
Kuah Vang, 2635 Crestwood Road. I was just wondering, as an educator too, if I'm working with my principal on this, would there be a form that would be drafted, that would be common district-wide?
Any question for Abby?
I would imagine there'd be some kind of.
Yeah, there's probably going to be something. We don't currently have anything, but I think it would probably help us all kind of standardize that process to ensure that everybody's on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So typically, what we do in those situations is we add it as an exhibit to the policy.
Okay, so that would be something else that maybe we could share quick, you know? And I would imagine if we touch base on the policy over the first couple of years, we'd be changing the form a little bit too as we get down the road, okay? Commissioner Vu?
I'm just curious. The policy is quite general, and then when you get to item number 12, you have athletic directors specifically listed there. What is the purpose?
I, I think it was specified between the principal and then athletic activities.
Point two.
Yeah.
Point two it's referenced as well.
Yeah, the department director is listed as too, as a specific entity.
So, what are we gaining by, by being specific here?
It does say, "The principal has to have prior permission." You have to have prior permission from the principal, so that's, that's good. To have fundraising, great. That's what number 12 says.
Can I just add? I think the reason that we added athletic director in there is because there's so many different sports, and the athletic director typically has a form, and they look at fundraising that's happening within their building over the course of the school year, because they want to make sure that not all activities are trying to fundraise at the same time, and there's a two-week limitation. And so, I think the reason why we added that athletic, athletic director piece is because many times, you know, athletic groups are a major fundraiser. And so, how closely and how detailed is the building principal looking at as well? And I think that's why we opted to add that athletic director piece in there, because that is a big component of fundraising that's happening at this, at the high schools specifically.
Dr. Hardbeck?
So, as a question, Commissioner Vu, do you have, are you saying that only one person in the building should be responsible, that, you know, whether it's the athletic director or the relevant student activity advisor, that that should be approved through the principal?
I'm thinking about DACA music band art. What about if they want to follow with similar fundraising effort?
The department chairs are listed in there as well? As far as the person that would write? I mean, that's kind of what we thought.
I think those all fit under the curricular category, where the department chairs would come in, because those are actually classes, as opposed to the sports piece or other clubs. So, that's why I think that it wasn't explicitly mentioned, the fine arts, or choir, or any of those classes, because those are included in the way that this governs how teachers and department chairs play a role already. I think that's why.
I would, I would suggest that when we talk with the principals about this, we talk about, I, I think to avoid confusion, there should be one contact person within the school. And it may come to that person through a variety of different people, but the final, say, the final accountability should rest with one person. So, because there is the potential for a lot of confusion with crowdsourcing. So, let's talk with the principals about how that might work the best.
Excellent, thank you. And then, we'll have another discussion. Good conversation. Anyone else? Seeing none, that takes us, anybody else from the audience? No? That takes us to the request for future agenda items? Seeing none, would someone please move to end our meeting?
So, move.
Second.
So, move from Commissioner Vu, second by Commissioner Luganville. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. And no one goes anywhere till we find out who's on the next agenda set.